There's two there, there's one from the special meeting and one from the regular meeting.
I move we accept the financial statement. You want to watch your thing?
There's one that has a letter in the sign, let's put it in the pile.
You already read it out?
Mm.
Yeah, I did.
Man, it's a short pile even.
I did. Part of the court, I think. There's. Oh, where is this?
Actually, I have this stain.
You're the only ones who have the sign back there. You buy quite a bit of stuff in passing off, Marvin. Those nuts now on the greater range, it's got that ability in shoulder on it. You know what them can start? Almost four bucks a nut. Now you can't buy them in a box, you buy them individually. Yeah.
Through passing off?
No, through, uh, yellow. I told Michael, I said, we need to go buy fast and all, see, they've got some there. I move we accept the financial statement. All in favor? Aye. Thank you for the show.
Just here, this is all that I have?
This mess is all you have, is that what you say, Glenn?
A mess is all I have, yeah. All I have is a mess.
My wife said I need hearing aid. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Road crossing permit, yes. Agreement or contract with Ford credit cards for the treasurer to be able to receive tax payments.
Yeah, I don't know that there's really a place for you guys to sign or anything, but I wanted to make you aware of what we were doing. Uh, this is a company called Forte.
Forte, I said Ford, okay.
Um, and they do a lot of the treasurer's office and it's so that people can go on our website now, pay their taxes and they'll pay through this. We had started this, uh, before I got sick, but then, then we had to stop and so we got it started next, last week. And they are going to help us get it rushed through, so it'll be done.
Expedited.
That's the word.
Expedited.
So that we can have it ready for, uh, taxes.
Good.
But I thought maybe you might want to look through it, there's a lot of.
A whole lot of paperwork in there.
Yeah, but they were really good about helping, getting it set up. Helping us get those filled out and stuff like that.
That's pretty cool, Marvin.
They charge you that?
Hmm?
They charge you a interest?
No, uh, we do not have to pay.
A fee?
A fee for that, no. Because I probably wouldn't have done it if we had a pay fee.
So do they charge, like you have sometimes use your Visa card, municipalities versus like your, your drafts into your accounts? I wonder if there's a charge on that end?
I don't know. I know they don't charge the county, now whether it's some individuals, some part of it. Uh, Melissa was really talking to her that day for me, trying to get it all gone because I was starting to catch up on some other stuff. And, uh, but she, she was really good about, uh, explaining everything to her and so I think it's, hopefully going to be pretty cut and dried, the money will go directly into the tax account when it's paid.
Well, there'll be a link on the, I guess that.
It'll be on the link on the website, yes. I think it'll help us out a lot, there's so, we've had so many people want to pay by credit cards.
Yeah. Very convenient, yeah.
Do you want to sign our copy? We need to cover up some of the signs, so it shows it went through the board.
Probably should, yeah.
Let me just pick a cover real quick.
I never thought of that, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're welcome.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just sign one from, I'm sure original.
You're filling the bottom in there?
Yeah, I would just sign on the bottom, that way you can show that it went through a meeting. Who made those motions?
Uh, it's me. Stan and me.
Marvin and Danley.
I appreciate you guys, going ahead and doing that for us, Dan.
I think that's a make deal, thank you.
I think we'll have a ha, a lot of happy taxpayers because they can do it that way.
Financial statement from FY 1920.
Yes, and this also was started before I got sick and then I had to completely redo it afterwards because I lost it. Um, so here's the financial statement and I have fixed a front page there for you to sign and, and we'll see that. Robin, that auditor was very helpful in helping me get that completed. Their instructions sometimes are not best, I didn't say that though.
Nobody's on.
You didn't hear it, did you? It's just, you know, trying to get it for everybody and it's hard to get it exactly right for everybody to understand. That page there today shows you, uh, what we started it last year with. And then it puts in the amount of apportionment that was given out. It puts in the amount of remarks. And it also, any fund to, it has to meet a certain criteria to be able to put it on there like that, 271303, I think it was, that we moved from one fund into share because they decided we don't need all the little bitty funds that we've had, so we've been trying to condense some of them. But, and then it'll tell you what it says at the end. And all the little numbers at the side is they want it to end in zeros. And so you have to show what you're doing to make that particular line zero. Yeah.
No comment.
No, I know. And then we have, also have the list of all of our funds and they want their descriptions a certain way, so you have to go through and redo it.
That's funny because when they started this chart of accounts, they have a nickname that we have to use, but she has to use the full name and then they come back to us and said, no, those have to match. And I go, we can't make them match because you're the ones that told me to use the nickname and she has to use a full fund. And they didn't believe us, so we thought, oh, OSHA County Training is involved and Robin involved and I said, okay, right here is the name I have to use, this is the name she has to use and yes, they don't match. So that will probably be a change that comes up.
Yeah, pretty frustrating.
Yeah, very frustrating, try to make it where, you know.
And mine is, mine's just abbreviated, it's just abbreviated name of what person is.
Does that mean you must have cheat sheets?
Yeah, oh, they, Kelpro, we were working, um, last week, they somehow or another took away all our sources. And then we had to put back, go through the list and put back the ones that now match the chart of account sources. That was a big mess.
Yeah, yeah. You can get a count type next to him, I'm still confused. If I don't have a cheat sheet there, I'm learning a few of them.
There's still, there's a lot of numbers, I mean, you know.
Tremendous lot.
There's a lot of numbers in one account and then you start going through all those accounts that they have, it's.
Like I've said, they should be charging us half as much to assess or to audit as what we were paying before. They said they'd be here half the time, but they don't like it when I mention that.
Yeah.
That's not going to happen. I move we accept the financial statement.
Second.
All in favor? COVID protocol for your office.
Yes, so this is my final thing and then I'll, I'll leave you alone.
Oh, you're.
I feel like with the amount of traffic that we have through taxis and that we need to do some.
Or vegging.
Yeah, the, yeah, plexiglass across our front. You do not, I gotta be careful here, I don't want this to come out bad. But there's a lot of people that come in and cough and, you know, if we can protect ourselves, I mean, I for one do not want it again and I don't want the rest of my girls to get it. And also it, it helps us protect the public because we're not doing the same thing to them. And what it would be, it'd be plexiglass just all across the front, there'd be.
In her thing, there's like a square there already and then there's like a little platform that comes up so they could still slide papers underneath and just fill that square in and she's had Tony come up and look and he thinks some can go in there.
Got to do it, got to do it.
I got.
I met my son, I spent three months, almost three months building for the school.
Yeah. I got two prices here, TH Rogers, um, is a hundred and nineteen ninety-eight per sheet and I think, I think we said three or four sheets.
Hundred and nineteen what?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
We did call Lowe's just to find out, there's our three by six sheets, which will also work well. And they're ninety, ninety-eight and, um, I think we figured the, the first one would be roughly somewhere in the four hundreds and the Lowe's would be somewhere in the three hundreds. I can't, I, we didn't get an exact, because we weren't exactly sure how much we'd have to, to have. We tried to get as close to.
And then the problem that he had building the, the school, they do have them, but they got to order them.
Um, I think they, she told, I think both places had them.
Good, because why no, we drove, we drove to Ponca City and to, got all those heads and they couldn't even order them here for a month.
Yeah, that, I think it's something that they, it really went out fast because people were doing things like this.
I do know, well, they surely backed off because I know several schools were happening to do that.
Yeah.
Well.
And then I was wondering if there'd be any way that since it is for the building and not actually my office expenses, if we could take it out of the contingency or whatever.
I don't think there'd be no.
I don't see any problem, man.
No. I'll make the motion.
One second. All in favor?
If for some reason they don't have those, don't let me know because I'll be going to the city Wednesday or Thursday and I can check that way. So I know Lo, uh, TH Rogers, and I'm sure Lowe's does it also, but TH Rogers will cut them.
Yes, they just said they were cutting.
Size for needs.
Well, I.
Do you have any preferences to where?
I'd rather buy them at home if it comes.
Okay, that's what I was just getting ready to say.
That's what the auditor will tell you, shop locally whenever you can.
But if they, they don't have them here, I mean, because there's a TH Rogers, is it Ponca City? And there's one in Fairview, there's one somewhere else. Is it Blackwell, Ponca City?
I, I don't know.
There's another one somewhere else, but they don't have them here. Yeah, there is one in Fairview also. We can run by him down there and get them on the way.
But I just go through here.
Yeah, I will, I'll get, go ahead and let, tell Tony to go check on them and do some remeasure so we don't get, I don't want us to get way more than we need.
No, no.
Well, that way if he has to go back and forth, it's just right there.
Right, okay, all right, guys, I appreciate it.
Alabama County 2020, 21 actual needs and financial statements over the past four years.
We talked to.
Yes, there's three places in the actual budget, there's two copies of the budget and then this is the publication I need you guys to sign on here also. So there's one place, three place, three place.
I'm pretty sure I got it, so, I'll, but we'll go check right now, yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys, I'll let you finish and go back to work. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I didn't mention this while she was in here, I should have. Um, I just need to get Chisholm's, um, exhibit Y for our lobby sheet and then everything will be ready to go down. We have Timberlake's front and Cherokee's EMSs. I don't have Amerita, tell her Amerita, but last time she let me take them on down and start our process without that. I will call Pat Carroll and ask him, because he called me, gosh, a couple of months ago and needed, um, the temporary appropriations for them. And I sent those to him, but I haven't heard any more from him, but if they have it ready, then we can send that later. That plastic, it just has static in it.
Well, we got to get it off of there in order to sign it. I'm not very good at that, there you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's just a little static.
God forbid we give them time at one place.
Yeah, you can't. That's mine, I think, in the very back, there should be another spot, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't get it marked. And that may be exercise board, that's exercise board, yeah, you guys have yours.
Now you got two?
Yes.
Okay. And Marvin, next year, you, you, you're not going to have any better time than this year unless your revenue changes.
I thought our meeting went really well.
But I do like the way we did it. I think we need to continue.
One thing about it, if you have your, plant your budget meetings with all the officers, it's a legal meeting and you can work on it for three or four months before.
Can't be that bad. I move we accept the annual financial statement.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Resolution for project agreement for bridge and approaches of project members.
No, I did.
I have the papers and sliced my finger.
Boy, the paper slices, they hurt. Did a razor blade cut, what is the deal with that?
She had more than one blade here, too.
I didn't even look, I'm sorry, I just printed it off and sent it to you guys and I didn't even look this one, I was like, it was only this one.
And then I did, I did. I don't think it, that's it, you want the end.
So if you find it, keep it open.
Yeah.
I will.
Marvin and I don't want to have to go through that battle.
This is yours, Dan.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're getting down to the back page right there.
So it's the back one and the front one?
Is that just the one, one?
All right, all right.
Just one on that, yes.
Okay.
All right. Screwed up today.
There we go.
You already made the motion on that, didn't you?
On the first one, not on the second one.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second this one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfer from fund, yeah.
This is Marvin's.
Chapter three, capital out, lady M and O.
This is, you're going from your capital outage to your M and O, the very top little paragraph. Yeah, right there, right there, it's that, you'll sign right there and then everybody, I'll sign the back page.
Is this the bottom?
Not the bottom. Not the bottom, the, about two-thirds of the way down. Oh, no.
No, it's your front page.
On the front page, I'm sorry, I'm on the back. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll say best till last this time, Dave.
All right.
I'll make the motion, I'll second it.
All in favor? Transfer sale tax M and O to the sale tax personal services for nine-one-one.
Jay, I need you to sign up here now, and then, this is to transfer some money out of her M and O into her personal services for her cash. Um, nine-one-one.
One of the money losing entities we got. I move we accept transfer, I'll circle it, all in favor?
Aye.
Transfer invasion inspection, six thousand dollars to County General M and O for attorney fees.
This is just to reverse those two transfers, the one for, um, social inspection for the attorney fees, and the one for the OSU. Um, we had to make those transfers earlier, um, last month, for, because the budget wasn't approved. This is just to reverse those transfers.
And the invasions are covered by the schools anyway.
Right.
Where you have to go with green handler, or break the rules. I'll second, all in favor? Aye.
This is the OSU one.
Now we transfer to the Agri Culture Services.
Don't sign up there at the top of the gym.
I move we accept that transfer.
Second.
All in favor? Any other person being registered?
Payrolls due Thursday before you all leave, and Thursday morning, we'll be at the fairgrounds seven to ten for the entrance.
I move we give it.
I see.
All in favor?